I'm glad I'm not at the... Rubber boots. Okay, October 16th, Planning Board meeting is now open. And first thing on our agenda, public hearing zoning amendments. John, give you the floor.
Yes, um, this is actually going to be... This is going to be Article 29.
Excuse me?
Do I have to read something?
You do.
Excuse me. I need to read something. Because Chris isn't here, so... Does the public being noticed? This is our first meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes. In accordance with provisions, Master of Law Statute is 48, Section 5, Rainham, Planning Board will hold a public hearing Thursday, October 16th, 2014, at 6:00 PM at Rainham Veterans Memorial Hall, to consider the following amendment to the town of Rainham zoning bylaws. Amend Article 14, comma, Open Space Preservation, Section 14.5G, affordable housing requirements by deleting the following strike through language. Quote, "For every 10 lots created under the provisions of this section, one additional, which is stricken, lot located within the development shall be made as defined by the Department of Housing and Community Development." Following sentence is stricken. "Such additional lots shall not count towards the calculation of the basic number of units." Such lots shall be subject to each lot removed from the restriction. Any person wishing to be heard or interested in the amendment should appear at the time and place designated. A complete copy of the zoning bylaw and proposed amendments may be viewed at the Rainham Town Clerk. Rainham Planning Board, Daniel Andrade, published in the Taunton Daily Gazette on September 30th and October 7th of this year.
Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, John. Yep, this is, this is going to be Article 29 at the upcoming town meeting. This amendment was brought up partially because of the Basset Noe Project. And, you know, when we looked at the existing language in Article 14 for open space preservation projects, we noticed that this language doesn't match what the intent of this bylaw was. Was it was never, this affordable housing stipulation was never meant to imply that a developer could come and get units above and beyond what the property could accommodate. It was supposed to, these affordable lots were supposed to fit within the allowable number of lots. So, we're holding this public hearing tonight because by the time this was found and amended, we didn't have time to properly advertise it with the other public hearings for the other zoning bylaw amendments. So, we're having that tonight. So, at the last, at the last meeting, the Planning Board voted unanimously to sponsor this article. So, I'm asking for it tonight is the Board to take a vote to recommend favorable action on this at the town meeting. Any questions?
Well, no question. Just comment that it's really just to clean up some wording that sounded good at the time, but on review wasn't as clear as it should have been.
I agree.
No, I was just going to say the same thing, Russ. So, we'll need to...
Motion made.
Second.
No discussion.
No discussion, all favor?
Aye.
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 Is that the only one you had tonight, John? Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a discussion abbreviated site plan 605. They're not here yet, so...
They're not here, but their plan is.
Oh, their plan is? Well, do they have a description, or...
Well, they submitted, you approved and abbreviated a couple of weeks ago for the last meeting, but they've made some changes since. So, we thought maybe they should come in and run them by you.
Don't even over the plan, because if they're not, if they're not here to discuss what the changes, what they're adding to it, because I don't think we're going to be looking at that and trying to figure out what they're...
Okay.
Are looking to...
Yeah, I agree.
We would have to review the whole entire plan.
They should explain it to us.
Right. We would have to review the whole entire plan to figure out what we already approved and what they're adding.
Yeah.
And it'd be like trying to find a needle in a haystack.
There was supposed to be somebody here.
Okay, so if they don't show up by the time we're done, then they'll have to...
I guess, I just need to know if we're still going abbreviated site plan on this.
We told them we would go with an abbreviated site plan. That was our decision.
Right.
Now, they're bringing it to us, but now they've added things they didn't discuss.
So...
And I agree with Dan and Burke that why are we spending time when they should be here explaining it to us?
Yeah, so they might show up, maybe the weather or something. So, we'll move on and...
We can move on to planner update and do general business and stuff.
We had invoice, three of us for the invoice to sign, so we have...
Minutes, Burke?
Yeah.
Minutes, I review them. I make a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes of October 2, 2014.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have money for this?
Hi, there.
We do.
And, Russ, how we doing?
Good.
No correspondence? Bills? Planner update?
Okay, um, first, this is South Coast Rail Technical Assistance Grant. What I had applied for in this year's round was to work with the Serpita Staff, Stafford Serpita, to prepare an informational brochure about the town. This is one of the measures that the Board of Overseers had discussed to, you know, spend out of the revolving fund to help market Rainham as a place for businesses that are looking to locate in the area. But when this technical assistance grant round came up, I figured, well, let's apply for a grant. And if we get it, then that's money we don't have to spend out of the town's pocket to do this. And I followed up with, with Jean Fox at the South Coast Rail Program a couple of weeks ago, because I knew that the award was going to be coming soon. And she said that the recommendations had been made and forwarded to the governor's office, and even though she couldn't formally say so, she said that it's looking good for Rainham, that we were basically on the recommended list for grants. So, it looks like we're going to get the $10,000 to do that.
When, do they have a time limit that they're supposed to be notifying us?
Uh, they're going to be notifying us probably within the next two weeks, two to three weeks. And then we have until next June 30th to actually complete it, so it gives us plenty of time. Okay, so that's good news. So, it looks like we're going to get a grant to do that.
Buddhist sign.
Um, considering the fact that Mass DOT rejected the potential for signs on Route 24 for the auto mile and the Commerce Center.
What?
Yeah, they said, they said that those two entities did not meet their criteria for attractions. So, they rejected, they rejected adding logo, logos to existing signs for the auto mile and for the Rainham Commerce Center. So, I actually...
Yeah, we thought it was strange, too, but...
Yes, and, and, yeah, so I, I called Boston to see if there was any hope to go to straight to the state level beyond District 5, but pretty much they said they firmly stand by the recommendations of the district when it comes to these things.
So, you can have a restaurant on the sign, but you can't have the...
Right.
Rainham Auto Mile?
Right. You can have the flea market, but you can't have the Rainham Auto Mile or the Commerce Park, which is our largest commerce center.
Which generates millions of dollars for...
And attracts employees from all over the region.
What, do we have seven?
Not just employees, but people who...
Seven major.
Are visiting, who don't know their way around, who a sign would be very helpful.
Exactly.
Which is why we have the sign that we're going to do.
Yep, so decided to, so I, I think it was Selectman Shivo, when he found this out, said, well, let's see if, if this is what they want, if this, if they... I think it's because it's not a specific location. The auto mile is a larger thing, maybe Mass DOT doesn't like that, I don't know. But we're going to see if we can get a logo put up there for the Buddhist temple.
Well, I would suggest, I, I think Route 44 is so important to the town, and I would ask that you ask the Selectmen if somebody could contact our state rep, Senator, and our rep, and see if we can get some assistance, some help from them.
Okay. Before we switch gears?
Yeah, I, I think it's that important. I think it's something if they're, you're going to put a friendly sign, you know, friendly is next left or next right, come on. I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to fight for, you know, the Route 44 businesses. I think it's, I would rather go right to the State House and see if we can get help, assistance from them. We don't ask for many things.
Right.
So, if we can...
Yeah, I was shocked when they outright rejected us and said it didn't meet either of their criteria, when, when it's clear that one of their criteria is something of regional significance. How can you say both of those are not regionally significant?
Well, the other thing, too, is I would, you know, the, know what one auto mile is, to me, is the same scope. And I bet you, you know, is off of 95. Do they have signs? And if they do, then it's a good...
You know what, that's something else to check out over the weekend.
It's a good, it's a good starting point to say, well, we're pretty well, we feel that we're similar to, to that auto mile, and we feel it's very important to the town. And it does, it brings in a lot of, a lot of traffic, it brings in a lot of potential people to spend money. And I think, I think even Ford is probably the number one dealer, Ford dealer, in this area. So, it's huge.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll do a little bit of background checking first to see if Norwood has signs along the highway, and then that will certainly give us a lot more leverage. So, all right, so I'll follow up on that, see if we can get...
That's good, if you call Burke, maybe you would tell him.
Yep. Okay.
May I show you? And, and maybe, I think what we're, what, that committee that you're on, I think it's a great idea to do it. So, you have all of those car dealers...
Right.
Who also can call...
There you go.
Theirs, state senators, and say, hey, come on, you know, we're, town of Rainham's trying to do something for Route 44 and...
So, maybe it's time to beat the squeaky wheel and say...
I, I have no problem doing that.
Okay, sounds good, I'll do that. Route 138 to Center Street. Talked to Gary McNautin a few, two, three weeks ago. It's still going back and forth. According to Gary McNautin, at the, you know, at the 11th hour, supposedly Mass DOT dropped it on them that they may have to put in sidewalks as part of the state's Complete Streets Program along Route 138, near that intersection.
Sidewalks from where?
Uh, well, that's...
Sidewalks from nowhere?
Right.
I think so.
Well, they are, but the only, I was, John had brought this up, and I had mentioned, if the state is, is suggesting sidewalks, and if the room is there, then I would feel that Rainham should support the state's request for them to put sidewalks in, because we've, you know, we're talking about Route 138 for quite a few years, and improving 138, at least if we have something to start with or something to tie into, it's there.
And if the applicant is going to have...
And let Walmart pay for them.
Right.
If they don't go anywhere right now, well, maybe in five years, they might go somewhere. We might be able to tie into them.
Well, we're doing an intersection, we ought to do it right.
Right. Well, even if the sidewalks...
Don't, don't go over.
There's a little bit of sidewalk on 138, though. What's that? There's a little bit of sidewalk. There are some.
Someday they'll all be tight together.
And, you know, so I, I reached out to Mass DOT to verify this, and getting conflicting reports, Mass DOT claims that, well, the design for this intersection was approved prior to the adoption of our Complete Streets Program, so they may not be required to do sidewalks, but ultimately it's up to Mass DOT. Mass is, and they did say, though, that if they, if, if their Complete Streets Program dictates that they put in sidewalks, they're not going to back off of it, that Walmart is going to have to put in sidewalks. So, that's the only thing is, you know, will Mass DOT require them to do sidewalks? I simply sent off an email to the gentleman at the state after talking to Dick Shivo and Dan and said, you know, if this is required by the state, the town will certainly support that. So, it's wait-and-see mode when they get this design finalized here. The only, the only glitch in that is if McMahon Associates has to go back and change something within the layout, they may have to come back before town meeting with amended, they may, they may have to amend the takings and the easements that they got from the town meeting.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about, Dan, you were on top of the field of those plans pretty carefully. Is there room to put a sidewalk?
It would, it would fall within the layout, the state's layout. They're not going to have, because if they do any sidewalks, there was, there was no sidewalks that came onto Center Street, and there's no room for sidewalks coming on Center Street. That's town property.
But you don't think it would, it would change any of the easements or takings they've had to do?
Not, not for Route 138.
Okay.
Because they own quite, they still will own quite a bit.
Then that, then that would be one less thing they have to do, which would be good.
And if they govern around the corner, it's a state property.
Okay.
You know, with the sidewalk, that would be fine, because Madison Mode is, I think the layout was like five feet from the building.
Yeah, really?
Prop, five feet.
Is the road close that far?
Oh, it's real close.
Oh, it's close, so, and that was one thing that we've been...
So, that must be the road, then?
That was one thing that we've been working on, the way the radius comes around, they were, they were willing, they were going to do vertical granite, and they were willing to go to slope granite so he can access his side of his garage, so, um...
Oh, good.
That was a big, that was a big, that was a big thing.
So, that's one less glitch that they have to...
Yeah.
That would be a pain to have to come back to town meeting to amend those.
Yeah, so I don't think that would.
Okay.
I don't think we would have to.
So, for our audience watching us... There is fishing route on 138 for sidewalks within the road, correct?
I, I believe so, yes.
And one, and one thing I was asked when I notified the town administrator of developments with this project, is he just wondered if, you know, is there any type of time limitation that they have to act on these easements? And I checked the town council, and there was no date set out in the articles that were passed in town meeting, so there's no drop dead deadline that they have to act on these. So, town meeting approved the easements and takings, therefore they're in effect until they get acted on, so.
Okay.
All right. CDPG grant application. I started asking around for ideas to potentially apply for community development block grant funding this upcoming February, although, you know, because of Rainham's status as a non-needy community, the chances of getting funding are fairly slim. I figured, well, if we don't ask, then we have no shot. So, after bouncing around some ideas, I think what, what I'm going to put together is I'm working with the executive director of the Housing Authority. She said that they're cash strapped, and they could really use some renovations and upgrades to their existing municipally owned and controlled affordable housing projects. So, I think that's, I'm going to work with her and see if we can get CDPG funding for that. Affordable housing is one of the criteria, and that is an eligible project. So, figuring that, you know, they're in need of, they're in need of some money to upgrade their facilities, so why don't we go for that? And it seems like that's, that's an idea that is ready, that we can easily get a cost estimate and get an application put together. And lastly, Dan mentioned 138, and I did a presentation to the board about a month to six weeks ago regarding, you know, the work that's been done over the years to explore, you know, zoning on Route 138 and potential changes to that zoning. And I think I mentioned the board as part of that project. I talked to homeowners who live in the residential D District and how much support, how much they would like to see something happen with the zoning on 138. And so, you know, one of the things that was discussed, that Dan and I have been talking about, is the potential of, you know, inviting people who live on 138, business owners and people who live on 138, to a planning board meeting, inviting potentially the Selectmen, inviting the remainder of the Route 138 steering committee.
Basically have it an open forum, as a public, as a public meeting.
Open forum to talk about Route 138.
One day after, I've been on two separate committees, been asked to be on two separate committees for Route 138 study. And it just seems that we get grant money from either the commuter rail, or for whatever reason, we have, we have another grant coming through, and all this money and all this time is being spent on trying to come up with ways of improving 138, whether it be zoning changes, whether it be overlay district. And after John brought it up to the board at the last, I don't know, it was last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, it's still, even this board has reservations about stepping into the, into the arena to support it at town meeting. So, discussing it with John a little more, I don't live on 138, I don't, none of us do, you live off of 138. It's something that I think the town as a whole should be proud of. Instead of the board, this being sponsored by the Planning Board, I think it should be brought up and sponsored by some landowners on 138. Let them bring it forward. We have a lot of people that are for it and who want it, and we have some people that don't want it. And let's have a public meet, let's have, you know, a public forum and have everybody discuss it. Selectmen can, can be present, so they see, because the Selectmen have, you know, brought it up at times, you know, what are we doing with 138? I know there's some businesses there that they're trying to get cleaned up at this point. So, there's a lot happening. I've been on the board for 13 years now, and 138, my, I think, my first meeting, 138 came up. Burke says he's been here for 20, over 20 years, and he's been talking about 138, and he paps me on the back and says, well, good luck with that meeting. So, I think it's time that we take it out of our hands, and we let the people come forward, and let's see what, let's see where it takes us.
Because from, in talking to different people, talking to Burke, and talking to Dan, and dealing with the Route 138 steering committee, I think the one thing that has changed in time from what all these people have told me in my ear here, and talking to, you know, John Noblen's and some of the people who own business in the homeowners on 138, seems to me the one thing that changed was when I reached out to the homeowners, is the level of support for something to happen by the homeowners on Route 138. From what I understand, that hasn't been there in the past, it's been mixed at best. Well, when I reached out to the homeowners, the, the support was nearly unanimous. So, I, I think, to Dan's point, it's, it's probably time to act, to invite them out to start, to at least start the conversation.
Right. So, if, if we have this open forum, and we have this discussion, and we have a lot of people that want to bring a, an article forward, then I say let them bring an article forward, because I don't think the Planning Board's going to bring an article forward going forward for Route 138. I know I'm not going to support, or I'm not going to bring one forward, I've spent enough time doing it, and, and not getting, not getting too far with it. We've had steering committees that, when Marilyn was here, we were within one meeting of having the steering committee presented to the Planning Board of a whole layout. And then all of a sudden, you know, Marilyn had left, and took us a year to find another town planner. In that time, all of a sudden, a couple of members on the board had changed what they, they felt, and all of a sudden, we're, we're in a hole, starting from scratch again. So, that $10,000 grant was, to me, was a waste. So, that's my take on 138. Yes, Burke?
I agree that, well, I know that I have been at town meetings before and had people get up and say, I don't live there, and I don't know what I'm talking about. So, I agree, it ought to be the people who live in the street. Doesn't make any sense to me that the people wouldn't want the property to be business owned, but if they don't, so be it. So, if, if they're in favor of it, and I think the Selectmen should be in favor of it, and if those two groups don't want to get on board, I don't, I don't see that we should spend any more time on it.
I'm all for that, and I, I agree 100%.
Jason, let's move on.
That's right.
Yeah, but I think, I think it's, I think the time, the timing is right to bring this forward and have an open discussion about it with the people on that quarter.
Right. Okay? Very good.
Thank you.
So, with that said, at 6:30, Metro Ford did not show up, and I'm not going to interpretate what their plan, what they're looking for. I will excuse myself from the next continued public hearing.
Okay, next up, Riverfront Estates Continued Public Hearing.
As for the record, you want to announce why, Dan, or...
Mr. Andrade has a financial interest in this property, so he will not be participating in our discussion.
Thank you. Can you name an address, please?
Yes, thank you. My name's Ed Brennan. I'm an attorney with an office at One Church Green in Taunton, representing Riverfront LLC, the applicant petitioner for the modification of the TDI Plan, special permit, and the subdivision approval. I understand that with only three members here tonight, the special permit would require a four-person vote on the special permit, so I would suggest that we would have to request another date on this. The subdivision approval, I could, I believe, could be by a majority of the board members, but the special permit requires four.
So, do you want to take any testimony?
Do anything tonight, or just continue?
Uh, well, the, I mean, we put on our presentation at the last meeting, the board continued it to tonight for an opportunity to refer it out to the, the town's consulting engineer. I understand that has, has occurred, and that...
Did you have your report?
I did, yes. And that Azu Atenero from ET Engineering reviewed the plans and has rendered a, a letter to the board, pretty much had no serious objections to the plans, and had some comments, and asked that some of the conditions be brought forward from the previous permit. But we don't have any issues, I believe, with, with his report. So, we'll certainly take a closer look at the letter, we received it a short time ago. One of the issues that did come up since the last meeting was the public access. I understand there are a, a number of the neighbors that would prefer that, that public access from the...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Chris is not here, and I prefer that, you know, going down there at this meeting.
Okay. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
So, we'll present no further evidence tonight. I would request a continuance. I do have, we do have somewhat of a time dilemma. If Mr. Atenero's letter is correct on the expiration of the original permit and the Permit Extension Act, your next meeting, if I understand correctly, would be November 6th, and the meeting after that would be November 20th. There's some issue with the permit, even though this was a modification, some issue with the permit expiring on November 20th. So, I don't know exactly how to handle that.
We need a certificate of action after the next...
On November 6th.
Correct. So, you will remind us of that.
Well, we need a certificate of action. If you, if, if the board were to vote, first off, we need the quorum on the 6th. Is, is there an issue of quorum?
The issue is, is that Brooke won't be here.
I, I have a seminar that I'm going to be at. So, you've only got three people.
Well, I would, I would ask if the board would consider a special meeting sometime between now and maybe the end of October, and, and have this issue on an agenda, even if it was, you know, in late in the afternoon or something. Because I understand, we do need, with Mr. Andrade recusing himself, and Mr. Attorney Fountain being not available on the 6th, we wouldn't be able to vote on the special permit.
I can't do next weekend, but I can do, next week, I'm actually booked every night, but the week after I'm free. So, we could do maybe a Tuesday or Wednesday, or the week after, that would be the 28th or 29th, maybe?
Yeah, Tuesday would be ideal, because town hall is open.
And Board Selectmen not sitting on Tuesday?
Yeah, Thursday.
Well, if we do a small room across the hall before...
If we do a 6:00, we're out of here a quarter past.
Exactly.
Is that date the 28th, John?
What's that?
Uh, are you talking the 28th of October?
Yeah.
Tuesday, the 28th. Next Tuesday's the 21st, the following Tuesday's the 28th.
Excellent.
28th.
Of course, we have no idea about...
The only glitch is, I don't, I don't see this, I don't think this happened on all kinds, but if town meeting happened to be continued to next night, because town meeting's the night before on the 27th. But that's the only potential glitch, but would it...
Well, okay, but even if it was, I'd be at 7, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, what about me at 6?
We would do this at 6:00 PM.
And you know something special? Because I got 6:00.
Yeah, I'll get rid of Chris tomorrow, make sure he can make sure he can sit there. No, no.
Wondering what's going on?
Yeah, I'll be in there.
We're missing someone.
Yes, I understand.
So, if we take any testimony and have a hearing tonight, we have a problem, because we have somebody who has to vote who hasn't heard the whole thing.
I see.
So, and we have a time limit coming up.
Can I just ask one question? Can I just ask one question?
Uh, sure.
Uh, attorney, there is a little confusion, at least on my part, when you were showing the maps.
You can, you can-
I'm sorry, um, jury napping, pass your first baptism Rainham.
You can ask a question concerning, um-
Procedure.
Procedure, or whatever, but a substantive, where are you going to put the road or something is the kind of thing we shouldn't get into, but you two could talk afterwards, as long as it doesn't involve the board, and that would be okay.
So you would prefer me to speak to the attorney after this? Okay.
So October 28th at 6:00 PM, here?
Special meetings.
Okay, and that is a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
You are, talk to him, but you are welcome to attend that meeting, I'm not sure what little room we're going to be in, it won't be in this room, but it'll be somewhere in this building, there's a smaller office across the street, there's one downstairs.
28th at what time?
28th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Metro, do you want to hear them or not? Do you want, you want a letter from them detailing what changes were made?
Well, um, is Dan gone?
Yeah, he left.
What?
My apologies, I'm laying up, going for flour, I was actually, in your arms tight, it's going to throw a little, I'm stroking a wall.
Okay, um, I think, well, this is an abbreviated site plan, and it isn't, it isn't even before us yet, right, it's just a discussion, so three people can do it, tell us what the changes are that you want to make.
Okay. In five minutes or less.
Yeah, Dan, no footballs, any people have to go away.
Okay, so what happened on the original plan, we were in a program with Kia, and they were going to give us money to do the whole complex.
Okay.
It fell through.
Okay.
So we're going to leave the front alone, without doing the addition across the front, square the front off, and doing the whole gallery-
Is there still a Kia there?
Yeah, yes, yeah, so all we're going to do is just change the colors to the front of the building, that's it.
Okay.
So there's no addition going on, there was a delivery-
Before you were doing the front to the building, you were doing something to the front of the Kia?
You're going to square off the front?
Yeah, we're squaring the front off.
Okay.
And then we were adding a delivery center on the side of it, that's no longer.
Where's the delivery going to be?
It was going to be on the side, we're not, it, what's going to happen is, three-car drive that's existing now, we're going to make one lane the delivery center.
So you need to designate that on the plan.
Okay. So-
Off-road delivery is very important to the board.
Okay. So you, um, we, we-
I, I just noticed when, when I compared the two plans, there's also more bays being put back here than what is, than what was originally proposed.
Correct, so what happened was, now that we're coming up with all the money on this project on this side, on the Kia side, Ford is kicking in a little bit more money.
Okay.
So, what we did was, um, well, let's, I want to just, I don't want to skip over, so Kia, the back of Kia is staying the same, the only thing we added was a, a car wash tunnel on the side of Kia, to wash all the customers' cars, so the addition off the back is from the original plan, the only thing we added on the Kia building is the car wash tunnel.
Okay, so you're doing less here than we said okay to?
Correct.
And you're doing more here than we said okay to?
Correct.
Does it mean drainage issues from the car wash, that we need to be, are you on sewer?
We're just about, they're, uh, getting up front.
Is that going to be on sewer, the car wash?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we figure we do it now.
So it's not being tied into drainage?
No, we're going to tie, that's why we're going to tie this.
Is that designated on the plan there?
Sewer, I know we talked about it.
It's coming out over here, right?
We did, we did talk about last time.
Yeah, there's going to be two outlets, we met with the engineer.
Okay.
We met with the engineer, we walked the site, we already, they already know where to put the outlets-
Okay.
For the complex, we're going to tie the whole complex in.
Okay, that should be designated somewhere on there.
Correct.
I think it probably is on one of these, but anyway, okay.
All right, so that takes care of Kia, so no front additions, the back is staying the same, we just added the car wash tunnel on the side.
Okay.
Ford, this is the same from the original plan.
Yeah.
The entry tower is the same from the original plan, now what we did was-
Now, when you say original plan-
From the original-
Original, or from the original?
When we had the discussion for the abbreviated-
So you're talking-
The original modification.
Original modification is what you're talking about, okay.
So now, on the Ford side, originally we were just squaring off the back here, um, but thinking about with Ford, obviously they're going to give us a little more money, and obviously we're primarily a truck store, we wanted to go a little deeper, so we could fit more trucks to service for the growth, because obviously we're growing, we're going to hire more people, and we want to just plan for the future.
When you said primarily a truck, does that mean you sell more trucks and cars?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Is that Ford in general, or just your-
Just at that location, you know?
So this is specific to you?
Correct, that's right, so by doing that, we went out two more bays, so we figured we square off the whole back, and this tunnel here is actually part of the service department, but I'm going to put the alignment rack here, and the truck forepost, so they're kind of on their own, but still tied in to here, it's, it's a straight shot in.
Is this existing building?
No.
Okay, there's a bush there, I guess.
Correct, the building, the building-
So you're going to add a building here?
Correct.
Is there a building here now?
This is the steel structure.
Okay, so you're adding here?
Correct.
Okay, and then you're adding this too?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I'd still call it abbreviated, if we did before, you're just adding a little here and subtracting a little there.
Okay, we all said with it then?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, that's why, I want to at least come and explain the changes.
No, I, we appreciate that.
And then we're set for the No- November 6th meeting.
We will be.
And, uh, everything's in, all the money, you got the-
Yes.
The butters.
We do read.
Okay, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, great, thanks, I appreciate you guys taking the time to talk to me.
You're here, you're here.
I'll leave to be on time, man.
I don't know how that goes.
Okay, all right, thanks, Dan, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And, um, did you want to adjourn the meeting first?
Well, is there, yeah, is there anything else to discuss, or is it time to adjourn?
What have I discussed the other issue?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I guess we can adjourn.
We can, we are adjourned, bud.
Okay.
Okay.